I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd ask Misty if you'd call the roll, please.
Harleen Kane. Ray Echopee.
Here.
Phil Lukens.
Here.
Martin Meyer.
Here.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Sam Howers.
Here.
Ron Richards.
Here.
And we do have a quorum. At this time, we do have a new slate of council members and a second term for a mayor, so I'd ask Misty if you'd give the over the office to those newly elected officials. Please stand.
Raise your right hand for a P. D. A. thing. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
The Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs.
And the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Alderman and Mayor.
Of all our mayor.
For the city of Hot Springs to the best of my ability.
For the city of Hot Springs to the best of my ability.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Well, thank you. We do have an official new council. And again, I'd remind the new council members, please speak into your mic so that those in the audience can hear you. And we have, the first order of business is to elect a president and vice president of our council. And these are important offices because in the event of the absence of the mayor, the president would serve in that purpose, and likewise, the vice president. One of the things I do use, the office of president, to bounce things off of and communicate with, so it is a very active role that Bob Nelson has served in the past. I would ask, at this time, if there is a nomination for the president of our council.
I nominate Bob Nelson for president of the council.
You second. I'll second.
Okay, there's been, there's a nomination, Bob Nelson. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would ask that all those in favor of electing Bob Nelson, or re-electing Bob Nelson as president of the council, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. We also need a vice president of the council, and again, very important office. I failed to mention that both the president and vice president are signatories on our bank accounts so that they can sign for checks, so. It is, Skylar Wetzel was our previous vice president. I would ask for a nomination for newly elected vice president of this council.
I'd like to nominate Martin Meyer for vice president.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we elect Marty Meyer as the vice president. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would ask that all those in favor of electing Marty Meyer as vice president of our council signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is unanimous. The next item on our... item of business that we need to take care of before we get into the agenda items is the appointment of a Ward Three Alderman. As you know, during the election, no one filed to be a representative of Ward Three. Of Ward Three. We did ask that anyone interested would provide a brief informational summary and volunteer to fill that position for one year. If you have in your packages, we have one individual that applied. Her name is Allison Ritter Bush, and you do have a copy of her qualifications. And I know that having worked with Allison on the Planning Zoning Commission, that she's very competent and would be an excellent council person. At this time, I would ask that there would be a motion to appoint Allison as the Ward Three Alderman. And again, Allison is not here tonight. She would be, but she is trying to get a bike event for Hot Springs in September, and she's attending a meeting that's very important. And she said, "I think that's more important than my personal being at the council meeting." It's a very important meeting, so that's why she's not here.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Allison Ritter Bush as Alderman for the Ward Three vacancy. Do you have a question, Mayor? Has she mentioned a one-year term in the letter? Or is it for a one-year term?
If it is for a one-year term, then that position would have to be for reelection, much like when I was appointed mayor, it was for one year and then...
We need to specify that in the nomination just that she be appointed.
I, it, you can go ahead and specify it in the nomination.
I'd make a motion to appoint Allison Ritter Bush as Alderman for Ward Three for a one-year term.
Second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we appoint Allison Ritter Bush as a Ward Three council person for a one-year term. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, I would ask, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries, and Allison will be sworn in at the next meeting. If you get that on the agenda, Misty. And now, moving on to the agenda, I would ask that, we do have a last-minute change. I would ask for an amended agenda, that Item G of New Business be removed. We've had a technicality come up, and we're going to have to amend the plot to reflect the non-signee on the plot for the Houston Avenue Sewer Project. We thought that it could be filed as it was, and we're looking for a way to make sure that we can get that accomplished before the next meeting. So I would ask a motion to approve the agenda, amended agenda, deleting Item G from New Business.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the deletion of Item G under New Business.
Second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the amended agenda. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is this in any way going to delay the start-up of the project?
President Nelson, I wish I could answer you and say, "No, it's not." But we have to find out the procedure for doing the amended plat. And if that is lengthy and involves regaining every individual's signature, it may delay the starting, so. We're hopeful that, we're hopeful that an affidavit can be filed and allow that to take place so it doesn't affect the...
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You have before you motions, or the amendments of the June 18th council meeting. I realize that several of you were not on the council at that time. I will assure you that those minutes have been reviewed. I believe they are accurate, so I would accept a motion to approve those minutes and would say that the new council would be entitled to vote on that item.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 18th council meeting.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those minutes. Are there any questions, corrections, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You also have in your package the bills in between for $114,639.74. I would ask for a motion to approve those bills in between.
I'll make a motion to approve bills in between of $114,639.74.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve those bills in between. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bills in between are approved. You also have before you a list of current claims for $91,560.87. I'd accept a motion to approve those current claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims for $91,560.87. Second that.
It's been moved and seconded that the current claims be approved. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the current claims are approved. You also have a list of Wells Fargo credit card charges for $7,086.30. I'd ask for a motion to approve those charges.
I'd make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card charges, $7,086.30. I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Wells Fargo credit card charges. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have one question. On page three, there's an over limit fee. Is that typical or...?
No, it's not. Our current credit card policy says that the card holder is responsible for those. This is the first time that that charge, and the person responsible for the charge is not the office owner.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion? And that credit card policy will be rebriefed to all city credit card holders. Are there any other discussions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is communications from the public. Are there any communications from the public?
Can I say something? I'm a member of the public, but can I...
You, you may certainly.
Just as a heads up to the members of the public, I was not aware of this beforehand, but this year, I was informed by a law enforcement officer that the longstanding City of Hot Springs ordinance regarding fireworks going more than six feet in the air, being banned inside city limits, will be enforced this year with a fine. So, you know, we have to, we have to obey the ordinance. And that will be enforced this year.
And I appreciate you bringing that forward, Sam. I'd also plan to contain that in the mayor's comments, but we do now... In the past, the city has not had a fine and bond schedule, or we could actually enforce that with any kind of teeth. That has been approved and will be enforced this year. I know the, because of the previous lack of enforcement, I think the police's intent is the first infraction will be a warning so that people will understand that we do have that ordinance in force, and it does have the potential of individuals being fined. Or having their, having their fireworks confiscated. There's the choice that the officer will have to make.
And Mayor, is that, is that based on, right now, on the drought level or the... Because it's been okayed in the past, is that correct?
It, it, it really hasn't been okay.
Oh, never has.
And the, there's a total ban, obviously, if there's fire conditions. This year, we've had a wait here, fire conditions weren't a total ban. But we've had numerous, numerous complaints in the past of those, that ordinance being violated, and we've had really no legal way to put some teeth behind enforcing it. And we've gotten that fixed and... Okay, any other communications? Hearing none. We will wait until 7:20. We have a couple of public hearings. So I move on to personnel actions. We've got... I'd accept a motion to approve personnel actions A through G.
Make a motion to approve personnel actions A through G.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve personnel actions A through G. I just want to point out, Item A, Darcy Engel, will be the new hire approved by council as administrative assistant at the police department, replacing Mrs. Dibble, who is retiring.
After 35-plus years of service...
Oh, he's been that long. I didn't realize it.
I might have extended that a little bit, but it's been quite a while. Maybe it's one month. It's been a long time.
And they'll be having a week overlap so that at least Darcy can find her, find her seat and log onto the computer.
And I believe the police department is having their retirement card re-treated.
Oh, okay. Any other discussion on the personnel actions? Hearing none, I'd ask all those in favor of approving those personnel actions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll continue on into looking at committee reports. And Bob, as you do, administrative and finance. First of all, just let me preface it, committee reports. Now that we do have a new council, I will be getting with each of you, and some of you I already have, as to what your preferences are for what committees you serve on, and we may make some minor changes on how these reports are given, but this is an opportunity, again, for the council to share with the public some of the many, many things that are discussed and recommended from each of the different committees. Bob, if you could start us off with administrative and finance. I know we met today, and I may be interrupting you in a couple of minutes.
Yeah, as the mayor mentioned, Admin Finance met today at City Hall. Mayor Cotti, Misty, and myself were present. Minutes are a little different for me with Admin Finance, so bear with me as I'm referencing a number of different things. The surplus property building lots, buildable lots. We had talked about that a little bit at Public Works. We're still pursuing that, getting the request for proposals out again. Possibly, we didn't have anybody that had submitted proposals the last half of the month. We're still looking at that. Peat Lane and Sons Mining, the FAA is still doing environmental review on that. The airport request for proposal for engineering services. Two RFPs have been returned, and they were accepted until July, until June 29th, so the debate on those is closed. The airport advisory committee will be taking a look at those. We're still looking at possibly revising... We're looking at holiday pay policy, administratively pay policy, callouts, on-call, weather-related emergencies, so we're still looking at how we want to manage that. The mayor had mentioned under New Business that...
Excuse me, Bob, I'm going to interrupt. The time is now 7:20. If you could hold that until after the hearings are over. We've got a public hearing I'd like to call to order to act on the application to transfer the existing off-sale liquor license from Fresh Start Convenience Store to BW Gas and Convenience Retail, doing business as Yes Way Store. I would ask if there are any comments from the public as to whether this transfer of off-sale packaged liquor license be denied or whether we should support it as a council? Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the council, questions? Okay, again, hearing none. I would ask for a motion to go ahead and approve the application to transfer that off-sale packaged liquor license.
I'll make a motion to approve the application to transfer the existing on-off, or off-sale packaged liquor license from Fresh Start Convenience Store, Inc. to BW Gas and Convenience Retail, LLC, doing business as Yes Way Store 1177.
Second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to act on that application. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. And we'll wait until 7:25, so Bob, you can continue on with your report. I appreciate it. Thank you.
The mayor had mentioned that he had heard recently from the Department of Transportation about the cantilever sidewalk that we feel is so important to the city for safety reasons. It looks like the city, the state would expect the city to pay for that. At this point, they're not ponying up any money for us. So we'll need to look at other ways, possibly grants, to come up with some, some money to get that taken care of. We'll be looking at that. Asphalt zipper, we talked about that. That's on your agenda tonight, and how that would be financed. The recommendation is to go with the financing option that Misty had included in the packets, the three-way financing from the general fund and then the water sewer, water in the sewer department. Misty talked with us about the review of the audit findings. The DLA has accepted the draft, and she's waiting to get the final back so that can get out to the public. We talked a little bit about a proposal for Southern Hills Golf Course, providing discounts for veterans and first responders. That has been tabled. That needs to go back to the golf course committee for their consideration and break forward what they feel might be the necessary recommendations. Also looking at, the city's using Jim Jones Midwest Assistance Programs to do a water rate study. Nothing's been decided. Just look at, are the roads rates appropriate to find what the city infrastructure needs to be for the future? Simply looking at, are the rates appropriate? The next meeting will be August 6th, City Hall, at 1:00.
Okay, thank you, Bob. And we're less than a minute away from 7:25. We'll wait and call that hearing together as the Chinese go off.
Can you explain why we're doing this again while we...
The time is 7:5. I'd like to open the public hearing for Mendelong and Brittany Sancho's Bar and Grill, LLC, application for a retail on-off sale malt beverage license to be used at 237 North River Street. Now, those of you that are astute, new council members, would realize that at the last council meeting, we voted to approve this license. However, we found out that the notice of this public hearing was not published in our official newspaper, per our request. The Star dropped the ball. And Misty and the Star have worked to rectify that situation along with Linda, and I appreciate your patience, Linda, in working to get this done. And I believe that we have things coordinated with the state authorities to be able to get this license granted expeditiously if it is approved.
Yes.
Okay. So are there any comments from the public, either for or against granting this license? I know Linda, you were here last time, explained your plans. You and Brittany were here at the meeting. We appreciate the New Business being open, and we appreciate the work that you've done. And again, I apologize for the confusion. I appreciate your patience. Are there any comments from the council, questions? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing at this time, and I would ask for a motion to approve the Sancho's Bar and Grill application for a retail on-off sale malt beverage license.
I'd make a motion to approve the application to Mendelong and Brittany Sancho's Bar and Grill, LLC, for retail on-off sale malt beverage license to be used at 237 North River Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve that license. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Moving on in, into the reports, the airport advisory committee will be pointing a council member for that. Custer Falls River Regional Waste Management District, Ron, you have an update for us?
Next meeting will be 12 July, 7:00 PM here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. And our Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, we will be pointing a council person to that commission. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee also needs a replacement and will be getting with someone to fill that position. Parks, Recs, Beautification, and Cultural Development Party.
Next Parks and Recs meeting is next Monday, July 9th, at 3:00 PM at the Mueller Center.
And Planning and Zoning Commission, Harleen is not here. There has been no activity in that commission. Public Safety, Bob Nelson was the current, was the past chair, and Alderman Bill Lukens will be chairing that, that committee in the future. Bob, you have the report since you were anchoring the meeting.
A very brief report, yes. We had a number of just routine housekeeping things that we've been following. One significant item that I'd like to mention with the council and the public is that 4th July is Wednesday, fireworks. And the police, Chief Close has worked with the DOT to get a sign flashing, the billboard-style signs up by ShopCo, down by Highway 71. Specific message hadn't been determined yet, but to let drivers know that there's going to be activity along the bypass, warning them that they'll need to be aware of what's going on there. He's also going to have the bicycle officer droning up... He's also going to have the bicycle officer droning up and down, watching for things and making sure everything's okay. The mayor also asked to have an officer patrol through the golf course, make sure that everything's going well there. We feel like we've got a good handle on that. Just a reminder to the public to be safe out there. Watch whatever fireworks they use, and if you're going to be on the bypass, watch for other traffic out there because there's going to be a bunch of them. The next public safety meeting will be third Wednesday of August-
Tuesday. We'd like to move that Tuesday the seventeenth to two PM.
Yes. The new chair has moved it from the eighteenth to the seventeenth.
Okay, great. And Bill, did you have anything that you wanted to add? I know you were at the last meeting.
No.
Okay, thank you. Public Works, Bob, and I've asked Ray Echafee to be the assistant chair in this committee since it has so many things ongoing, and with Ray's past experience, I think it'd be good to have him on that committee to assist you.
All right, sure. Public Works, June twenty-sixth, City Hall. Mayor Cotty, Kim, Scott, Tracy and myself were there. Couple of old business items, all updates showing. We've already talked about the easement for the Houston Sewer Avenue project. I had talked with you last time that the city would need to pursue what I'm calling Option B. It's just a little jog rather than a perfectly straight line. There'll need to be just a little jog in the round of sewer line, and the project is certainly hoped to continue on schedule. The request for proposals for the brush piles of landfill, that's a grant the city has applied for from the state of South Dakota. We still haven't heard back from that. Some new business items, the storm drain near Parquest has been plugging with the recent heavy rains, and it's been flooding the business down there. The sewer department has looked at it and determined that there's a section of the line that needs to be resized. They're going to be working that in with the schedules for the other city projects. For the public out there, the city is going to begin trimming trees and bushes in alleys so that the garbage trucks can get through and get trash picked up. So they'll be doing that along the alley rightways, extending upwards up to fourteen feet. If there's anybody out there who has some concern about their trees or bushes that are in alleys that could be affected by it, please get in touch with City Hall, but it's something that needs to be done. The Miller Center has some roof paint warranty issues that we'll be looking into, make sure it's covered under warranty. And Scott worked closely with ShopCo to salvage about two-hundred-and-twelve yards of good clean river rock from their roof. If anybody was out at ShopCo, I think over the last week, week and a half, you could see that they were doing something on the roof up there and was getting the river rock off there. Evidently, they're doing some other kind of sealing for the roof. But a big thank you to Scott for working with them to get that river rock at no charge. Could certainly be used in other projects throughout the city. The next public awards meeting will be July tenth, three o'clock at City Hall.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Again, a very, very busy committee and appreciate all the work. Southern Hills Economic Development, Marty, do you have anything to report?
Next CHEDCO meeting will be Friday, July twentieth, and time and location are yet to be determined.
Okay, thank you. Southern Hills Golf Advisory Committee, again, Skyler is off the council, no report here. Volunteer Fire Department, Ron.
Houspring Volunteer Fire Department, met twelfth of June. This is all pretty old news. I have to apologize. I missed the last meeting here, so. Their extraction training, they said went real well, training how to get people out of crushed vehicles and stuff like that. They said that was very successful. Tomorrow, three July, from eleven till two, it's Houspring Volunteer Fire Department, has a memorial for Harry Redef. He was a longtime member of that fire department, passed away recently. They reiterated it. No fireworks in Houspring's. We're part of the Southern Hills Fire District, no means no fireworks. They had two new firemen that were voted in, Doug Shaw and Elizabeth Zachness, who both voted in for one year. Formation? They have a fourth of July parade, and they said they could remark to do one up, be throwing candy from the fire trucks, they'll have firemen walking alongside handing it out. Two days around those talks, if we're lucky. Next meeting is the tenth of July at Houspring Volunteer Fire Department.
Okay, thank you, Ron. In conference, if planned, Sam?
We have not had our next meeting yet. We still have yet to determine the next meeting date.
Okay. Moving on in the agenda, we have a second reading of ordinance eleven eighty-nine, supplemental appropriation ordinance. And Misty, I'd like to ask you to explain that. I know we have some new council people on board, and so that there's an understanding of what we're voting on.
In September, we attempt to plan our budget for the year, and things come up. Will give us donations, or we have more to know than we anticipated, or council makes motions to change that in some way. We are required by law to do a supplemental appropriation ordinance when we are changing the budget that's approved in September. We try to do these two times per year. The ordinances take two readings, a vote of the majority of the council, and then thirty days before they're effective. Because there's publication requirements and a cost associated with that, we kind of build up, even though you make motions and we determine things, we build these up and we do one in the middle of the year, and then we do the second and last one in November. With this supplemental appropriation ordinance, I believe both new council members, even though it's a second reading, have a copy in your folders, and I annotated that version so that there would be an explanation of what we're appropriating funds for and why. If you have any specific questions on those, I'd be happy to answer them, but we thought it would be good to have the first reading with the old council, second reading with the new council, so that everyone is aware that the old council knew that they agreed to and currently agree with the supplements.
Okay, so at this time, I'd expect a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance eleven eighty-nine.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance eleven eighty-nine, supplemental appropriation ordinance.
I'll accept it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve that.
Sorry, I didn't second it.
Ron?
I wanted to say first.
There any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing done. I'd ask Misty if you'd call the roll.
Ray Echafee?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business. The first item of new business is a possible motion and discussion to look at our legal services contract with Beasley Law Office, and we want to approve that until the thirtieth of April, two thousand nineteen. I'd accept a motion to approve that contract at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the legal services contract from Beasley Law Office, PC, for legal services from five one eighteen to four thirty nineteen.
And you do have a copy of that contract in your packages? Are there any discussion?
I'll second that motion.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you. Good catch there. Any discussion?
There are no changes to the current way we're operating.
Okay, good, good point. And we've been pleased with the services that we have gotten from the firm. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have a possible motion and discussion to set budget hearing dates for the twenty-fourth of July and the twenty-sixth, to begin at five PM each day, and that, those are the times that we go over setting the budget, and if there is additional time needed, those days will be added. I accept a motion to set those hearing dates.
I'd make a motion to set the budget hearing dates for July twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth, to begin at five PM each day, with additional days to be added if needed.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we set those budget hearing dates for the twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth of July. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
The location will be City Hall.
Again, that would be at City Hall. Our hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have before us a possible motion and discussion to approve changing Wells Fargo Bank of the West First Interstate Account Signature Cards to remove Georgia Holmes and Skyler Wessel, and to add the newly appointed council president and vice president. So we would want to add Bob Nelson and Marty Meyer to that list. I'd accept a motion to make that change to our signature cards.
I'll make a motion to approve change in the Wells Fargo Bank of the West and First Interstate Account Signature Cards to remove Georgia Holmes and Skyler Wessel, and add newly appointed two thousand eighteen through two thousand nineteen council president and vice president.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to change those signature cards. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D is a possible motion and discussion to approve and sign the library cleaning contract with Black Hills Special Services for seven hundred and thirty dollars a month. I know that the library has been pleased with the attention and service they do get from Black Hills Special Services. It's a good operating arrangement to help our community along with keeping our library clean. So I'd accept a motion to approve that contract.
I would make the motion to approve to sign library cleaning contract with Black Hills Special Services at seven thirty dollars, seven hundred and thirty dollars a month.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that contract. Is there any discussion?
Is this the same rate as we began in?
Yes, it is. Same as last year.
Do we know, just out of curiosity, looking at the contract they do, three days a week, and about how long they're there each day? Do you have an idea?
I have an idea, but I can't find you the real answer, but I think it's about an hour and a half to two hours, and they have a group of people.
That's what I want to know.
And I'll find out for sure if that is the right answer for you.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E on the agenda is to repeal the council and mayor codes of conduct. Again, we spoke about this at the last council meeting. Misty did research and find that these codes were approved by council. After reviewing those, I felt that we have adequate safeguards through South Dakota law and the checks and balances that the council and mayor have, and that we can handle all situations accordingly, and there's no need for a complex, multi-page code of conduct. I would accept a motion to repeal those codes of conduct at this time.
I'll make the motion to repeal the council and mayor codes of conduct, Lord Mississippi.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to repeal the council and mayor codes of conduct, and they are a policy as opposed to an ordinance. I want to make sure that is understood. Is there any discussion?
Was this a policy regarding personal interactions or those at the meeting?
Or with-
Was this a policy regarding interactions between council members at the meetings, or was it just in the public away from meetings?
It was all of the above.
Okay.
And went into possible how the council would discipline and so forth if there were violations, and also included interaction with the public as far as, in the media, as far as stating official positions for the city and so forth. And I think these are all covered in, in South Dakota law and through the, South Dakota Municipal League puts out excellent handbooks and so forth that govern that type of behavior, so there's no need to reinvent that wheel.
Thank you.
Good question. Any, any other comments or questions? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a possible motion and discussion to purchase an asphalt zipper with no financing with a future appropriation that would come from three different funds as listed there. And just to give you some information on that, this would allow us to purchase that fully without incurring any financing charges. And how that would help us in the future is every year we budget a certain amount for street repairs, and that money to pay the interest charges and the payment on this would come out of those street repairs. So for example, if we budgeted sixty thousand dollars for street repairs next year and then had to pay, say, thirty thousand, thirty thousand payment, we'd only have thirty thousand available for street repairs. So this actually helps us leverage the amount that we can use for repairing our streets plus having a machine that will help us to do that more efficiently. So I would accept a motion to purchase that asphalt zipper with no financing.
I'll make a motion to purchase the asphalt zipper, no financing, with a future appropriation of the following: fifty percent, seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars from the one-on-one general fund, unassigned fund dollars; twenty-five percent, thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars from the six-oh-two water fund, unrestricted net position; and twenty-five percent, thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars from the six-oh-four wastewater fund, unrestricted net position.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we purchase this asphalt zipper with the mentioned, aforementioned funding out of the aforementioned fundings codes. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
What exactly is an asphalt zipper? Just for, just for an idea.
Okay. What it is, it's an attachment that goes on to the front end of a loader that will grind up the pavement and allow to make, us to make actual repairs to the base of failing pavements. If you'll notice around, our, many of our city streets have what we call alligator cracking, and that's an indication that that base has failed. That asphalt zipper allows us to grind that up, replace it down as a base, and then we can come along and have either roll that and compact it and leave it as a gravel, asphalt gravel type thing like we do in our alleys, or we can come along and it would be less expensive to reconstruct and pave. And the individual communities that have used this have lauded the efficiency that it is and the options that it has provided them. Any other question? I know, Marty, you were involved in it.
Yeah, I just, I was curious, and also to just add to what you said, I do remember reading one comment in the reviews, they called it an industrial strength rolling tiller. It's got teeth, it will actually go in and tear up the pavement as well. And I was concerned, and I wanted to ask Misty if there's, if we had looked into if there was additional maintenance contracts available. was additional maintenance contracts available.
You had asked Steve Anderson or Alexander to do that and they haven't heard back from them, but I don't know.
And I just also wanted to explain the reason for the different funding because, and again, I think is very encouraging that our departments are working together because this will also be used and save considerable amount of time. We do have a water or sewer line break that they can actually remove the pavement with this machine and get an accurate square type cut of what needs to be cut and then excavate down, make the repair, fill it in, and have the base material there to work with that. And since wastewater and the water department would be also using this, that's why it was agreed upon by each of the department heads to share the initial purchase cost. Any other discussion?
I have a comment and a question to the reason for actually purchasing versus financing as the mayor was talking about. Misty looked at three different options for financing and the interest over the five-year period ranged anywhere from $18,000 to $26,000 to finance it. So, it makes sense as long as these funds can absorb the cost. And that would be my question. Funds are okay for having this amount of money taken out of it, not shortfalls?
At this time, they have the funds available.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Move on to item H. We have a possible motion and discussion to appoint Brian Crawford to the Historical Preservation Commission for a three-year term. I'd accept a motion to make that appointment.
I'd make a motion to appoint Brian Crawford to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term, 2018 to 2021.
I'll second the motion.
You're been moved and seconded to make that appointment. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
Is the recommendation of the commission that we make this appointment?
I talked with someone by the name of Mr. Brian Powers and he made a recommendation that we do add Brian Crawford's name to that commission. And again, one of the things that will remind the commission that obviously anytime we do have these type of commissions that determine what goes into our historic district preservation area, that we do have the same rules that apply to council as far as contact of interest. If a personal property or business is involved, the members are to refrain from voting on that particular area or object. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a couple of public hearings to set. First of all, a public hearing at 7:15 on July 16th for another temporary alcoholic beverage license from Chautauqua Artisan's Market to be used in conjunction with the balloon festival. I'd accept a motion to set that public hearing date.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for 7:15 P.M. on July 16th, 2018 to act on the application for a temporary alcoholic beverage license from Chautauqua Artisans' Market to be used at 629 North River Street on 825, 2018 in conjunction with the balloon festival.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to set that public hearing date. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have a possible motion and discussion to set a public hearing for 7:20 P.M. on the 16th. And this is for a retail on-off sale malt beverage license for the Jitterbug Junction located on 321 North River Street. I'd accept a motion to set that public hearing.
Make a motion to set a public hearing for 7:20 P.M. on July 16th, 2018 to act on the application for a retail on-off sale malt beverage license from Tavi Summers, Johnston Nutrition LLC, doing business as Jitterbug Junction, to be used at 321 North River Street. I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to set that public hearing date. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. I'd ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on in the agenda, Misty, could you give us your finance officer report, please?
All right. I kind of wrote this one a little different to introduce the newer council members to what you can find in this monthly report that I provide written to you. I do admit that municipal financing can be a bit overwhelming. It's my job to make it as transparent and pain-free as possible, but if you go through this and you're just spinning, please come in and we'll spend a little time talking through what works and what helps and where you can find information. As always, those that have reviewed this before, the memo and the finance officer reports contain year-to-date profit and loss summaries by fund, the fund summary report, which shows how the funds are doing compared to our budget, the cash balance report, and the investment reports. In addition to the monthly financials, I like to highlight specific relevant topics in my monthly memo. So, you'll see the reminder for the elected officials workshop in Pierre on July 18th. We have one R S V P for that. We're passing the deadline, but if there's someone who wishes they would have R S V P'd, I don't think it's too late. It is a very good crash course. George mentioned earlier the blue book that you get from the Municipal League, which is kind of a guide to a condensed version of the guide to the laws that you have to follow and the rules and what your jobs are as council members. So, I'm glad that we do have one R S V P and we'll make sure to get a blue book for the new council members who are not able to attend. We do have five elected officials and three city employees attending the July 12th Budget Training in Rapid City. If there's anybody interested in hard pulling, we'll be happy to do that, so let me know. And I'm glad to see so many people interested in going right before we have our scheduled budget hearings. We have completed the budget meetings with department heads. The preliminary budget information will be available for council by July 16th for year review prior to our scheduled budget hearings. The preliminary budget information that you'll receive in hard copy is from our accounting software, Banyan. They'll be provided to you in a bookbound form. You can make notes, but we also during the hearings will use a projector to review matching Excel spreadsheets. We like to use those in the budget hearings because they allow us to make modifications in real time and add notes or highlight specific items, which Banyan doesn't allow us to do. So, we'll use both of those. The Excel spreadsheets don't print well, so we typically don't make copies of these. If you'd like them, I'd be happy to email them off to you. And then just a reminder that if the two days, 5:00 P.M. until we decide to quit are not enough, additional budget hearings will be scheduled. The requirement is that we have an ordinance. We call it, it would be the 2019 Budget Ordinance will be presented to the council and hopefully pass first meeting in September, and then we'll have a second reading, about a second meeting in September. I mentioned a little bit what I found when doing the research for financing the asphalt zipper. The last council meeting, we approved to purchase it with the discussion around the financing to be done at this meeting. So, if you have any questions or want to review my findings regarding those proposals we got from financing institutions, I'd be happy to share those with you. And then lastly, I just kind of touch on the council's responsibility for approving claims. We lost a couple of council members that were very actively involved in reviewing the claims, understanding claims, asking questions about them, and we need that help in the finance office. And it's not just a help, it's your responsibility. We submit claims that are presented to us. It's council's responsibility to approve and understand those claims. So, never feel like your questions are not wanted or warranted. And I am available to sit down and review any questions you have regarding the claims anytime, and I appreciate your interest in them. Thank you and welcome.
Mayor, I do have one question for Misty. The 2018 Budget Training in Rapid City, where's that at?
It's at the Ramkota Hotel.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And when does it start, again?
I think it's either 9:00 to 3:00 or 10:00 to 3:00. I think I emailed you the, like, you know, I just can't remember if it's 9:00 or 10:00 to 3:00 P.M.
Okay, thank you, Misty. We have no report from the city administrator and moving on to the mayor's report. Some things I'd like to share with you. First of all, I think it's important that everybody realizes that we have a small city staff that provides the same essential services of any larger city that have a lot larger staffs. And obviously, we have a lot of essential things that we need to cover, work on each and every day, but we've also added some significant additional tasks that are more above and beyond. And two of those have been concentrating on workforce housing and the upcoming road construction project with addition that has been balked at a little bit by South Dakota DOT, the Cantleyger Sidewalk. And so, those have presented a lot of extra work for the staff, trying to get all of these things coordinated and will so in the future. As far as the workforce housing, as Bob mentioned in his report, I believe that we will be successful if we do extend the dates on the R F P. There have been some indication that some contractors may be interested and so we'll be keeping you advised on those particular issues. As far as the Cantleyger Sidewalk, I did finally get an answer from the DOT. And basically, the answer was that the design for Cantleyger Sidewalk doesn't meet their DOT standards for highway design. So, therefore, they didn't design it and they're not going to fund it. Now, being an old Air Force pilot, I like to tell war stories. And one of the things that I used to do as an instructor pilot in a simulator in the old KC-135 was to practice emergency procedures with the various crews. And the thing that we always stressed was following each air emergency procedure has a checklist that you follow like a bible. And there is, there are situations that you can get into that, for example, if you have a fuel leak with an engine out, that if you follow the book and we're flying a heavy airplane, the procedures would tell you to shut down an engine. If you already had one shut down, now you're down to two engines and the airplane would not be able to fly. You would crash. And I use this demonstration to teach crews to follow common sense. And I think it applies to our situation with the DOT. If we follow the book in downtown Hot Springs in constructing the highway, we're going to crash our business district. With narrow sidewalks on the business side, an ugly flood wall with no, nothing on the other side, narrow traffic lanes, which, by the way, just a week or so ago, I crossed the street, a white lobe was coming by. The individual truck driver struggling to stay within his lane actually bumped the crossing sign in front of City Hall. And so, we have a very serious safety concern along with a plan to improve our downtown area to get business there. So, I think that we need to communicate this to DOT, that they make a common sense decision rather than go according to the book. And I believe that they can find funding to assist us. I think the city can also contribute somewhat to that. Those are to be decided. But we need to let our voice be heard, and the first opportunity to do that is at the State Transportation Improvement Plan Public Meeting. It's going to be held on the 12th of July at the Ramkota in Rapid City at 7:00. It's a public meeting and I'm going to be getting with the chamber, the businesses, owners down on River Street in downtown Hot Springs. And I hope we have a very large delegation that goes. I found that when I was the executive director of the chamber and South Dakota DOT was balking at completing the Heartland Express, getting and publicly lamenting our concern about that did help get that Heartland Express funded with the same situation existed with getting four lanes into Hot Springs along Highway 385-18. So, we will be hoping to have a large delegation that attends that meeting or else provides written comments to South Dakota DOT. That's the first big step. But we've got a lot of work to do to find the funds, looking at getting grants, looking at twisting DOT's arm to look and view this as a safety issue, getting our political, state political leaders on board with us to support. And so, it's going to be a long, hard process and I just wanted to make everyone aware of that opportunity on the 12th of July. Also, it's been mentioned the 4th of July is coming up. We've talked about the fireworks enforcement. Lot of activities in town to encourage everyone to take advantage of them, lot of duck race. I just know that this year I've got the winning ticket. You know, there are a lot of prizes, so, you know, there are a lot of second, third, fourth, you know, prizes. But enjoy that. The B-1 flyover unfortunately has been canceled. Now, again, they would have had a KC-135. It would have made it and had the maintenance problems. But I think it promises to be an excellent day here in Hot Springs. A lot of activities. I know the chamber is doing a picnic up at Butler Park and that's a good place to watch fireworks from. We're paying particular attention to get signs that appreciate South Dakota DOT in helping us with that, as Bob mentioned, to control traffic along the bypass. It's very difficult to keep people from parking there, so we're going to try to slow everybody down and ensure that we're safe. We also want to, we know that with the paved roads and the Boulder Falls addition, there'll probably be more people there parking. And I want to make sure that we have the roads open so that if there are emergency vehicles that need to respond to something, that they'll be able to get through that. But it promises to be a great 4th of July. The fireworks are in and we just need to pray there's not a sudden thunderstorm that bugged us. So, that's all I have. I would like to ask for a motion to go into executive session for legal.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for South Dakota DOT on 1-25-23, legal.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And there will be no actions subsequent to the executive session. Motion carries, and there will be no actions subsequent to the executive session. I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You can adjourn. Thank you.